Because there is some.
You want a microphone?
A little right place. A little device in there. It's like, you know, here. I've heard. It's where it can be. You know, worked out. We need someone who's got a paper. But you know where I am?
Yeah.
From there to here. It's down on a dump. Ever had a foot up down because I caught the lights and I'm in a flat?
Whatever. Guys, I messaged from Paul. What?
Oh, you have a key.
Oh, good. Okay. That's what I thought.
Yes.
Welcome, everyone. It's so nice to see people in person. I am calling to order this meeting of the West Hollywood Planning Commission. It is today's date, Thursday, July 21st. First, I'm going to read our land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood Planning Commission acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabriela Yotanga and Gabriela Okej people's. To view the Planning Commission meeting, for anybody who may be tuning in at home, please note that the Zoom platform dial-in is 669-900-6833. Meeting ID is 835-6798-5097 is the official viewing platform for the City of West Hollywood's public meetings. To afford the public with another viewing option, digital streaming platform viewers can easily find programming by searching for WeHoTV within the search function on YouTube. You can also view on YouTube at www.youtube.com/WeHoTV. Other viewing options and platforms are made available as a courtesy to viewers and their reliability cannot be assured by the city. If you experience technical difficulties while viewing the meeting on one of these platforms, please access WeHoTV at the city's website, www.Weho.org/WeHoTV, and visit information and assistance on meeting access. To participate by providing an ecomment, members of the public who wish to comment on matters before the Planning Commission are strongly encouraged to submit an ecomment using the form located at https://www-weho.org/city-government/WeHoTV, no later than 4:00 p.m. on the Planning Commission meeting day. Ecomments received by 4:00 p.m. will be forwarded to the Planning Commission and posted on the city's website as part of the official meeting record. To participate by providing public comment by telephone, this option is to provide public comment via phone only. To view the meeting, please see information on how to view the meeting provided above. You are strongly encouraged to email D. Gillig, that's D.G.I.L.L.I.G. at weho.org, in advance of the Planning Commission meeting to be added to the public speaker list for the meeting. Please include your name, the phone number from which you will be calling, and which item you would like to speak on. Dial in 10 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. The meeting begins at 6:30 p.m. Dial-in codes *6 is unmute, *9 lets the host know you want to speak on the current item. Again, the dial-in, I'll repeat this for posterity, is 669-900-6833. The meeting ID is 835-6798-5097. Your phone will be muted until you are called to speak. Comments from the public are limited to three minutes per speaker. Thank you for coming to my TED Talk. Okay. Okay, so I guess I'm officially, I've called the meeting to order. Number two is Pledge of Allegiance. I can barely see anybody's face because everyone's wearing a mask, as well you should. Commissioner Lombardi, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. And do I stay seated since this is my first time, or do we?
Stand.
I do want to note that Item 3, which was to administer the oath of office to our newly-appointed Planning Commission member Kimberly Copeland, will be delayed until the next meeting. She was not able to be here tonight, but we do look forward to welcoming her at the next meeting. Item 4A, we have two special orders of business. Item A is election of the chair, and Item B is election of the vice chair, and I believe our one and only city clerk Melissa Crowder will be leading us in this.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Good evening, Commission. Thank you for having me tonight. So yes, I will be conducting the election of the chair and the vice chair. So we will start with a call for nominations for chair.
There it goes. I nominate Stacy Jones.
Okay. Just for a technical issue, Stacy, how long have you been in the chair role for this rotation? Three months?
It was since Commissioner Hoopengarner left, so it actually was the weekend, the first weekend of May, so it would have been the first meeting after that.
Okay. So you're eligible. I just wanted to confirm that you're eligible. Okay. Do we have any other nominations for chair? Okay, can I have a motion to close the nominations?
I'll make a motion to close the nomination.
Motion by Commissioner Carvalho. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gregoire. Now I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Carvalho.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregoire.
Yes.
Commissioner Lombardi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
And Chair Jones remains your chair for the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now I will call for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Marquita Thomas.
I would like to second.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? Okay. Do we have a motion to close?
I'll move.
Moved by Chair Jones.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Gregoire. And I'll do roll call. Commissioner Carvalho.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregoire.
Yes.
Commissioner Lombardi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
Your new vice chair, or once again, is Vice Chair Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's really nice to see you, IRL.
Thank you.
And thank you to my peers. I'm very happy to see you in person. Okay. Mr. Gillig, could you please lead us, or could you please do roll call now that we're?
Thank you, and welcome, Commissioners. Commissioner Lombardi.
Present.
Commissioner Gregoire.
Here.
Commissioner Carvalero.
Here.
Vice Chair Thomas.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 6 is approval of the agenda subject. Do we have any changes or requests for changes to the agenda as it stands right now?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Great. David, can you call the vote, please?
Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Carvalero.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregoire.
Yes.
Commissioner Lombardi.
Yes.
And the agenda is approved as presented for July 21st, 2022.
Thank you.
I'm not sure who made that motion. I think I made the motion. The public record said it was Commissioner Lombardi.
Oh, okay, noted.
Thank you.
Item 7 is approval of the minutes. We'll vote on these individually, as I need to, well, we'll vote on these individually. So Item 7A is the minutes of June 2nd, 2022. Do we have any changes? Have a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
I'll second. David, are you, sorry, please go ahead.
I'm sorry. Who made the motion, please?
I made the motion.
Commissioner Gregoire made the motion, and I seconded.
Commissioner Lombardi. Commissioner Gregoire.
Yes.
Commissioner Carvalero.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thomas.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
And the minutes for June 2nd, 2022, are approved as presented.
Great, thank you.
So I'm aware, are we using the device to make motions?
I was just going to ask that.
Yeah, yes, if you can, yeah, please do.
And should we also be, because I think you indicated this for me, I just saw for the yea vote, should we be voting, or should we wait for you to call our names, and then you will add yea or nay?
No, I mean, after you vote and you put in your vote, it'll appear on the screen, and then I'll just confirm that.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for the public forbearing with us. This is a new system, and some of us have never used it before, or just forgot how. In any case, okay. Item 7B is approval of the minutes for the meeting June 16th, 2022. I just want to note that I will need to abstain from this, as I was not present at that meeting.
Chair, we do have a public speaker that would like to speak on this. Michael Wokolavich.
On items, on the minutes from June 2nd, or?
It's on 7A.
Okay.
Yeah.
The name is Michael Wojkowicz, longstanding, even longer upstanding resident, West Hollywood. I begin by thanking city staff and assuring those present, whether sitting upon the dais or the few from the public who are sitting directly behind me, there's no reason for concern, likewise. Those who are enjoying this meeting from the comfort of a remote location, no need for any adjustment. Although finding a member from the public speaking on an agenda item related to the approval of meeting minutes may seem unsettling, this is indeed a right the public does in fact retain. So I stand here, not by some special allowance given or reasonable accommodation granted, but because of what is allowed by the Brown Act, thus should find itself common, occurring at any city meeting, whether council, commission, advisory board, task force, et cetera, if requested. So again, gratitude towards those staff members who allowed themselves to question what was first decided, their initial denial of the public for this time. So onwards. There are three reasons wanting to speak on the approval for the minutes relating to June 2nd, and trust me, I get it, 16 pages long. One agenda item took nearly four hours to be heard, adding on to prior hearings that have built a plethora of paperwork. That said, any delay in the normal turnaround time for release of information to the public may have impact, consequence than that desired. Second point, although 16 pages long, one would think quicker release of the minutes, given the skewed and foreshortened synopsis granted to some. Ironically, this factual occurrence appears more tied to specific West Hollywood residents than, say, someone from Los Angeles, or maybe Marina Del Rey, as is the case given to the detailed accounts given by Jennifer Morell and Jake Stevens. The fact that the acknowledgement by this commission to overlook at least one individual who stayed online for over four hours to speak on the 1201-1207 Detroit proposal only then allowed time in the last round of public comment after the vote was taken, its deletion from the minutes is shameful. The distortion given within the minutes for that person's comment is purely dishonest. Lastly, the allowance by the current Planning Commissioner chair to allow the representatives for the EAH project on Detroit to besmirch my character during his rebuttal was uncalled for. My credentials, my vast experience, much of which is tied to affordable housing at many levels, from design, from living, from nonprofit board, was not known, thus should not have been allowed to be questioned during a rebuttal. It is a violation of your code of conduct. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And that is our last public speaker for this item.
Thank you. Okay. Item 7B again is minutes from the meeting on June 16th. Again, I'll be abstaining from this, as I was not present.
And can we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the minute.
I'll second.
Commissioner Lombardi.
This is not working over here for me, but yes.
Are we voting by electronic?
There it is.
And the motion passes, noting Chair Jones abstaining to approve the minutes of June 16th, 2022, as presented.
Thank you. Okay. Item 8 is public comment. And again, so happy to see anyone's face who showed up tonight. It's been a long, two plus, two and a half years. Do we have any public speakers, David?
We do, Chair. Our first public speaker will be Mayor Protemseppi Shine. She will be followed by Michael Wojkowicz.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Jones, Vice Chair Thomas, and Commissioners, and congratulations on your election tonight and three months ago. I am so happy to see you all back in chambers and back in person. I just came here because I know you were coming back, and I wanted to say thank you for your service, and that's it. Just giving you all gratitude for the work you do, and it's a lot on this commission. So thank you for being back in person. Chair Jones, absolutely, it's been a long two years, almost two years now, and I guess, who knows about time now with being, post-pandemic time recall is a thing, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Our next speaker will be Michael Wojkowicz, followed by Christopher Jimenez.
Good evening again, Michael Wojkowicz. Please bear with me, because this is coming off the cuff. This is the first time that I have been in this chambers, not accompanied by a living creature that I felt complete partnership with. So I think I can do this, because this is truly great. It's one of those WeHo moments I so desperately hope and wish for, and it happened. So something incredible, maybe even shocking, I don't think I've ever seen it before at a city meeting, happened a few days ago. In the presence of Mayor Lauren Meister, Mayor Protemseppi Shine, and in the midst of a task force that was set up on social justice, a community listening session happened Tuesday evening, and it was held in Fiesta Hall. And there's relevance to that meeting, because although unremarkable for a community listening meeting, there was one specific thing that has direct nexus to this commission. But let's start with the good. In the middle of community discourse, out from the field, the lawn of a plumber park, in comes a minor, maybe 12, maybe 13, maybe 14 years old. I paint the picture, individual probably just scored a goal in soccer, and in victory just kept running, and before they knew it, they were within Fiesta Hall. Many seats available, they took one. Discourse happening, they raised their hand. To the credit of the consultant, the moderator, they were called upon. The question asked, what is going on? Brief explanation was given. The minor sat down. Conversation begins, he raises his hand, and he is called upon again. He's going to give his comments on the current agenda material being discussed, which was cannabis, all right? The minor is smart. They know their stuff. He leaves, waltzes in again, raises his hand, now they're on housing and homeless. Pertinent questions. Leaves, maybe another goal, comes back in, now it's legalizing the sex worker trade. Despite the age, he has relevant things to say, and he does it without naming any letter of the alphabet. My time is dwindling down, so I'm going to ask you for a big favor. I'm foregoing additional requests for comments on agenda items, but I just want to let you know really quickly. They talked, the forum, the social justice people, the people who, like you, are appointed by the same council members. What their expectations are for deliveries by the city in ways of housing the homeless are in direct opposition to what you allowed on June 2nd by the waivers that you granted EAH. The storage area, no outdoor space. It's one of these things that I have been talking about, the disconnect between, you know, members who are appointed by the same people. I strongly encourage you, you don't have to talk to me, the offer still stands, but I think you need to sit down with the social justice task force. And they need to hear from you, to understand your decisions, and you need to hear from them, to understand their ideals. I thank you so much. It's different, but it's kind of nice to be back in the chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our final in-person speaker will be Christopher Jimenez. Christopher, you have three minutes.
Totally ill-prepared for this, I was just told about this yesterday.
Just state your city of residence, please.
Can I what?
Just state your city of residence.
West Hollywood.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Is this better? A little better? Okay, there we go. So I was just saying that I'm totally ill-prepared for this, because I was just told about this meeting yesterday. But first, I wanted to thank, I'm part of the community gardens over on Detroit. I'm new to the neighborhood, and as I moved into the neighborhood, I was trying to find ways of, like, getting to know the neighborhood, and I found out about the gardens, and I was very excited, as with COVID and everything, I was working from home a lot, and this gave me an excuse to set up my garden, and it's doing pretty well. Got a watermelon the other day, that was exciting. And so I wanted to thank whoever was responsible for that, because I think it's a great asset to the neighborhood. But yesterday, I was told that there is a, they're building something there, so they're going to either relocate the gardens, I don't know, I haven't done my due diligence on that yet, but either they're moving them, or they're canceling the program, I'm not sure. I will be looking into that. But in case they are just getting rid of it altogether, and not replacing them, or expanding the program, I just wanted to say that I think that's a big error, because I, as I, when I'm there gardening, so many people stop by, they smile, they inquire about it, they want to know how they can get involved, and I just think it's such a great asset to the neighborhood, and it's trying, I think it's, pardon the pun, but like, building roots, and people, when they ask me about it, like, it's hard for me to tell them how to get involved, because I don't think that the city did a good enough job promoting it. And I can tell, because a lot of the people are West Hollywood residents, and they just, they didn't, you know, they didn't get any sort of, I don't know, literature on it, I have no idea. So anyways, I will be doing, now that I know about this, I didn't know that they were replacing the program, but now that I know about this, I will look into it, and I hope I get to see you more, more of you guys in the future. I'll try to get more involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christopher. That is our last in-person public comment. We do have a couple of public comments on the Zoom platform with us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker in Zoom this evening is Zakiya Wright. Zakiya, please press *6, and you will have three minutes to provide public comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Zakiya Wright, resident of West Hollywood. Congratulations to Chair Copeland and Vice Chair Thomas this evening. I'm sorry, Chair Jones and Vice Chair Thomas. I am the liaison from the Rent Stabilization Commission, so I just wanted to introduce myself. Hopefully, next time I'll be in person, and I just look forward to reporting back to my commission and all the happenings with you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Zakiya. Our next speaker in Zoom this evening is Lynn Russell. Lynn, please press *6, and you will have three minutes to provide public comment.
Are we on?
Yes, we are. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Jones, and shall we continue? On future affordable housing projects, it is really a hope that each of the Commissioners would look below the surface, especially when these come before you. On June 2nd, the 1201-1207 North Detroit project, the only Commissioner that queried the project regarding the 50-50.
Okay. Lynn, press *6. Yeah, go ahead, we'll start your timer. Go ahead, Lynn.
I don't know what's going on here, but I'll start over. Good evening, Chair Jones, and shall we continue? It's the hope that each of the Commissioners would look below the surface on any future affordable housing projects that may come before you. On the 1201-1207 North Detroit project, the only Commissioner that queried the project regarding the 50-50 split between low-income and previously on house individuals was Commissioner Thomas. The alarming thing was that there were no further questions or discussions. The following day, since it seemed very odd, I looked into it by speaking with the architect, and was rather perplexed to find out that the appearance of an arm-placed wraparound concept of services provided by St. John's in Santa Monica would be attached to this project. That was personally suggested at the meeting. And after the recent city council meeting and hearing the update on the homeless initiative by Cory Flank, who provided, who announced what appeared to be near negligible progress provided by two entities operating outside of West Hollywood, the figures that she presented seemed long on PR and rather short on realism. Hopefully, the next time projects like this comes before you, it would be excellent if you would dig deeper or have the appropriate city staff member describe the full context of this inclusion, as to how the homeless folks plan to seamlessly traverse the divide while living alongside the 50% residents who presumably not know what to expect or need to make an untenable choice, given their circumstances. This may, I don't know what their entree, the normal residents would have entree to this, but I believe it would be helpful if we had a more concrete, clear plan to see this in. clear plan to see this in essence rather than wishful thinking. So thank you so much. And David, I will not be speaking on the other items requested. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. That was our final speaker in Zoom this evening.
Great, thank you. Item nine is the director's report.
Thank you, Chair and members of the commission. It's great to be back. It's nice to see people in person and meet a couple of the commissioners that I have not met in person since they were appointed. So it's great to be back. And congratulations to the Chair and Vice Chair for being elected tonight. I have a few items to talk about. First, the zone tax amendments at last Monday's city council meeting. The planning commission recommended approval of some changes to alcohol rules for restaurants and some parking changes for restaurants. The city council passed the changes as they relate to the alcohol use, allowing restaurants to sell to-go alcohol and streamlining the permitting process. The city council also approved a reduction in parking requirements for outdoor dining that did not eliminate them altogether. Instead, what the city council did is they increased the amount of area that would be exempt from parking requirements from 250 square feet up to 1,000 square feet. So that still allows for expansion of outdoor dining areas, fairly sizable area without parking. So that's going to come back. We have to make some changes to the ordinance based on that. So that will go back to them shortly. The next major item from the planning commission that's going to council will be Robertson Lane, and that's scheduled for August 15th. So in a couple of meetings. And then finally, I want to announce that we have a new long-range planning manager, and his name is Francisco Contreras. And he was in the planning department many years ago, and he went on to be the manager of the Innovations Division. And he'll be returning full-time in September. And so, and Macintosh will be with us through the rest of the summer, July and August. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you so much. It's so nice to see you. Any questions for Mr. Keough? All right, thank you very much. Item 10 is items from commissioners. Do we have any comments from commissioners? I'm looking at, Commissioner Lombardi, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, I want to congratulate you, Chair Jones and Vice Chair Thomas, on your nominations. Can you all hear me? Much better? Okay. Congratulations, Chair Jones and Vice Chair Thomas, on your nominations. And it was really nice to see Mayor Pro Tem shine here today to congratulate us as well. It's great to be here in person. This is my first meeting. I feel like I'm one of the pandemic commissioner survivors, I guess I will say. Sure, you can relate, Vice Chair Thomas. It's unfortunate to hear that Kimberly Copeland is sick today. She will not be sworn in. I do hope that she has a fast recovery and we get to see her soon. And I did want to also make one comment regarding the previous meeting on June 16th. And I truly mean this with no malice toward any commissioners. I did feel that we breezed through the zone tax amendments that were presented, and the city's bundling of these two amendments onto the topic of formalizing temporary pandemic measures was partially true. But items were revised that were not discussed during long-range planning. And we did vote on these two measures bundled together, which were separate topics, which I felt was somewhat confusing. I was in support of these measures, but overall, it made for a challenging process, especially via Zoom. When presented to city council on Monday, the zone tax amendments were better clarified to acknowledge that there was some streamlining in terms of the public process, in particular regarding alcohol sales. The urgency of these items was something that I questioned, and I believe was also questioned during the city council meeting. And I do wonder why this moved forward so quickly. I like to think of the commission as a collegial group, and I appreciate the discussions that we have. And I do hope that we can strive to continue to have those discussions, that we can feel heard and give everyone the time and space to get out what they want to discuss so that we can make the best possible decisions. And on that note, I believe tonight, we may be hearing one item that we would not be hearing in the future. Interesting to look at it in that perspective too tonight.
Thank you. Any other commissioners like to speak at this time? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not used to the tennis neck here. First, I just want to, I know I've said this now like nine times, but I just want to thank everyone who's here, my fellow commissioners, two of whom I met outside, one of you at an airport lounge, and one of whom I met at a fundraising event for someone in the city, and one of whom I've met tonight for the first time in person. And also just to thank staff. I have, you know, several of us have been on commission, two of us, you know, since before the pandemic. And I think I personally much prefer in-person meetings. I just want to thank staff for getting this all together. I want to thank all of our speakers. Mayor Pro Tem Shine, thank you for coming. Michael Wigolevich, so nice to see you again. It's been, it's been a few years. And people who called in, we really, we always say this, but truly, like, we are citizens too of West Hollywood, and we cannot do our jobs without you coming. So thank you. Before I become too effusive, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop, but I just want to let all of you know how happy I am to see you and how happy I am that we all made it safely through the pandemic because it was, it was rough. Any other comments from commissioners? I just have one comment. If you do make a motion, please also be sure to say that you're making a motion. Sometimes it can be very confusing, and I can't always see it on my screen. So going forward, if there is something that you want to move, just make sure that when you hit it, that you also say, "I'm making a motion." It's just easier that way. Okay, moving on to item 11, consent calendar. There is none. And we'll move right into public hearings. We have four tonight. We will start with item 12A, 955 North Hancock Avenue. This is a subdivision request. And I will turn this over to staff.
Derek, switch to Zoom.
It's on Zoom.
Yeah, we're switching. Okay, this is right. Switch to Zoom.
Hang on one second, Derek. Okay, so.
That's not good?
Now we can, yes, thank you.
You guys can hear me? I think we need to mute someone.
Hang on one second. Like, it's hard to see the participant list when the screen share is up. So let me stop.
Oh, let me, uh.
Yeah, give me one sec. Nope.
I think she's muted now.
Okay. All good. Thanks, Derek.
Let's try this again. Sorry about that. Okay. Can everyone see my screen now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Derek.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Derek Purification, Associate Planner for the City of West Hollywood. The item before you is item 12A, which is the request for a tentative parcel map for the subdivision of a two-story, three-unit residential building, which is also referred as a common interest development in our zoning code, which is also not to be confused with tenants-in-common. So two different things. The subject property is located on the west side of Hancock Avenue. It's located in the R2 zone, which is residential low-density. It is located between Hallway Drive to the north and Santa Monica Boulevard to the south. And in this next screen, you can see the actual subdivision itself. The request is to subdivide three units. You can see, this is the first unit, second in the middle, and third in the rear. The project was administratively approved in December of 2020, and the project is currently under plan check review right now. The project qualifies for sequel exemption under Section 15332 for infill development projects. Staff is able to make the findings to recommend approval to the planning commission to approve the request for the tentative parcel map pursuant to the draft resolution, PC 22-1471. That pretty much concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, David, do we have any public speakers on this item?
Thank you, Chair. No, we have, I received no public comment forms for this item.
Great, thank you. So I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Sorry, I'm still getting used to this, readjusting. And we can move into deliberation. Any comments from commissioners? These tend to be pretty cut and dry. I believe by law, we're required to hear them. But we can also move forward with the motion if someone has one. I move to approve.
I'll second.
Great, thank you.
Were we supposed to have a public comment on?
We did. There wasn't anybody, yeah.
Thank you. And the motion passes unanimously. There is an appeal process. The resolution the planning commission just approved memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The city clerk's office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees.
Thank you, David. Moving on to item 11B. This is 1159 North Formosa Avenue. This is again a subdivision request, and we will turn this over to staff. I don't know if it's going to be someone via Zoom or here IRL, but great. Oh, sorry, 12B. I'm correcting, it's item 12B. I don't know what I said, but thank you for the correction, Vice Chair Thomas.
Commissioners, before you this evening is a request to approve a tract map for a previously-approved five-unit multifamily residential building that was approved by the planning commission in 2015 into a common interest development. Sorry, I'm trying to go to the next screen. A tentative tract map was previously approved and has since expired. The building is currently under construction. Per the applicant, the project is slated to be completed by the end of the year or early next year. The project was designed and approved to comply with the requirements of dwellings within the R3B zoning district and all other applicable provisions of the city zoning ordinance. The subdivision of this building will not be detrimental to the public welfare and will not impede implementation of the general plan nor the purpose and intent of the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the subdivision permit as conditioned in the draft resolution. Staff is available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lori. Any questions for staff at this time? I'm gonna take that as a no. Do we have any public speakers on this item, David?
Uh, thank you, Chair. No, we received no public comments for this item.
Great, thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and move us into deliberation and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Do I have any comments from commissioners or a motion to approve?
I made a motion. Second.
Great, thank you.
The second one was by Commissioner Greg Waugh.
Noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the motion passes unanimously. There is an appeal process. The resolution the planning commission just approved memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The city clerk's office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees.
Thank you, David. Item 12C is 909 North Ogden Drive. Again, this is a request to approve a subdivision of a residential building into a common interest development. I'll turn this over to staff. Jennifer Alkire? No, Zoom?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The request is to approve a tract map for a previously-approved six-unit multifamily residential building that was approved by the Director of Planning and Development Services in 2020 as rental units. The property is currently vacant, and the project has recently been approved by the Building and Safety Division. Construction is expected to start shortly. The project was designed and approved to comply with the requirements of dwellings within the R3B zoning district and all other applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance. The subdivision of this building will not be detrimental to the public welfare and will not impede implementation of the general plan nor the purpose and intent of the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the subdivision permit as conditioned in the draft resolution. Staff received a comment from a neighbor with concerns about the property not being secure, which potentially poses a safety issue for the neighborhood. The buildings were previously demolished because people were breaking into the building and living inside the building, which is something that can unfortunately happen when a building is vacant. Staff has reached out to the property owner to ensure the site remains safe and secure throughout the construction process, and they have agreed to keep a close eye on it throughout that process. The applicant team also reached out to the neighbor to provide contact information throughout the construction process and to address any resident concerns. Staff drove by the property this morning, and the site was secure. Further, this resident requested that the city approve more units throughout the city due to the housing crisis and was not in favor of the request for condos over rental units. I let him know that I would bring up his comments as he was unable to attend the meeting tonight. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lori. Do we have any questions for staff from commissioners at this time? No? Okay.
I did. My question's been partially answered. I had some concerns about how long this lot had been vacant. So what assurances do we have that the applicant will be, that there will be a project there soon? Because this, how long, first of all, how long has this vacant lot been there? When did they demolish the previous property?
I believe, I believe it was demolished a few months ago. And the reasoning for that was that code compliance and the sheriff's department had issues with people breaking into the property. The building was boarded up. The windows were, the boards were taken down. I think there was even a fire that was started in the building. So it just kept, you know, the owner kept boarding it back up, and they kept having issues. So we asked that the applicant submit an early demolition permit to demolish the building so these issues would not continue. So that's why the building, or the property, is vacant for now.
Okay, I just had concerns about how long this, because the entitlement was quite some time ago, and I just had concerns about the impact on public safety in particular. So thank you for providing that information. I would just, I know that this, this is within the valid permit window set by the municipal code. But we, you know, we like to get projects going. And so I just wanted to know if, you know, if we heard from the applicant about when they expect to start construction so that we don't continue to have this vacant lot that could attract any number of issues.
The applicant is available. Andrea, if you have any questions? Andrea, if you have any questions, if you'd like to ask her, she probably has a better idea than staff. Yes, I can report that construction has been prepared. The temporary fencing has been put up. A toilet has been delivered to site, but they're preparing to start immediately.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant at this time? Looks like a no. David, do we have any public speakers on this item?
Uh, thank you, Chair. No, we do not have any public comments over this.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. We can move into deliberation, or we can get a motion to approve.
I would move approval.
I'll second.
Thank you, and the motion passes unanimously. We have an appeal process. The resolution the planning commission just approved memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The city clerk's office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees.
Thank you. So we will move along to an item I expect to be a little more involved. This is Item 12D, 8275 Santa Monica Boulevard, Monica's House. This is a public hearing to consider requests for a new bar and distill, I'm just gonna read this, and an existing commercial tenant space for the property located at the aforementioned address. So kick it off to staff.
Okay, I assume everybody can see my PowerPoint presentation. If you don't, please stop me.
We can see it, Roger, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so good evening, Chair, Commission, and members of the public. My name is Roger Rath, and I am the Associate Planner for the City of West Hollywood. The item before you is a conditional use permit for the tenant space located at 8275 Santa Monica Boulevard. The request is for the sale, service, and onsite consumption of beer, wine, and distilled cocktails, also known as full alcohol, under ABC License Type 48, for a new bar, Monica's House, in an existing 1,600 square feet tenant space. This request is also in conjunction with interior tenant improvements. The project exempt from CEQA under Section 15303 for new construction or conversions of small structures. The subject property sits on a 7,500 square foot lot in the CC1 Zone. The tenant space is located on the ground floor of a one-story commercial building split into two tenant spaces. The building is identified as having potential for designation for a local cultural resource. The surrounding neighborhood consists of other commercial uses to the west, south, and east, and to the north are residential uses that are set back over 52 feet away from the structure. The scope of work is limited to the interior only and a new bar. There are no physical improvements to the facade. The floor plan includes the main room containing a couple of booths, seating at the bar counter, and a few two-seat tables. Behind the main room, past a short corridor, is a restroom with four individual stalls, and the rear of the tenant space is enclosed lounge that does not provide access to the property's rear yard and is utilized by the bar use only. The four-stall restroom will be shared with adjacent tenant in the building, a retail cannabis and edibles consumption lounge that will restrict entry onto its premises to persons 21 years of age and over, similar to the proposed bar. There are five other establishments in this area with an active license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits, ABC License Type 47, for onsite consumption as an accessory use to a restaurant. There are no bars within the general vicinity. Some of the key highlights of the proposed project that I wanted to point out are that the applicant is not proposing any exterior changes. There is a change of use from a restaurant with no previous alcohol service to a bar with no intensification of use, since there is no additional parking being triggered. The proposed hours of operations are from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, with the sales and service ending at 1:30 AM. The entire use is contained within the interior of the building with no live entertainment or dance floor. The proposed use of a small-scale bar and the sale, service, and onsite consumption of beer, wine, and distilled spirits is well suited for the site and the surrounding neighborhood. The request adds the variety of business for both daytime and nighttime light on the Santa Monica Boulevard West that provides economic and physical benefits to the city. The project has been conditioned to minimize impacts to the surrounding neighborhood and residents, and meets all the other zoning ordinance requirements. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the subject project as conditioned in the draft resolution, PC 22-1472. So this concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions you may have, and the applicant is also on the line. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Gregoire?
I guess two questions. The first one, I did see in the staff report some references to protecting the neighborhood from noise from the back of the establishment. I guess I wanted more detail about that. Will there not be any access at all via a window or a door or whatever to the back of the establishment, out of which music and other noise could be heard by the residents?
Correct. The bar use is contained to all enclosed areas. So then, the floor plan, if you see that seating slash lounge area, that's all enclosed. So there's no outdoor space for this use.
Okay. My second question was ADA compliance. I just wanted to make sure that those bathrooms were ADA compliant? And have we looked at that?
Yeah, ADA compliance is reviewed when it goes to building plan check, which is the next step after this, if this project obtains approval.
That's my last question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tom, or Vice Chair Thomas?
Thank you, Chair. In the staff report, it states that Monica's House will purchase the same number of credits as the previous restaurant. Could you explain to the public how parking credits work? We've seen that the city has been evaluating parking minimums a lot lately. So I wanted to make sure that the public understands how parking credits work. And also, could you let us know how many credits the previous restaurant purchased?
Sure. So the way that parking credits work is that the city devised a program where there's different districts that we deem that there is enough public parking to kind of service the area. So that kind of, not eliminates, but kind of allows businesses within the district area boundaries to take advantage of, to beat their required parking. So for instance, this area, they, we have the King's parking structure that helps, you know, support the public parking for this, for this district. And, you know, businesses are allowed to kind of pay for these parking credits to satisfy parking requirements. So this project in particular, the parking credits that they have obtained, let me look into that. Do you mind if I kind of take some time to kind of pull that up on our tracking system and get back to you?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Roger, I'm just wondering if this is something that you think you should wait until after? Are you, are you able to pull it up now? I don't want, you're not, I'm not putting you on blast. I'm just curious to know how long you think it'll take.
Oh, yeah, I was hoping that while you guys are asking me more questions, I can kind of put it up on the side.
Okay.
Bye, thanks.
Understood, thank you. Any additional questions for staff?
Yes, I have some questions. Mr. Rath, could you clarify? If you were to order a drink at this bar, could you take it over to the cannabis lounge?
No, you would not, just because the cannabis has very restrictive requirements about crossover between alcohol uses and cannabis. So they actually went through the Business License Commission and received approval with conditions to kind of prevent crossover and not allow alcohol to kind of go between two spaces.
Okay, and I see on the plans that there is a large studio and seating area near the rear of the building after the restrooms, and there is no door, or is there a door there?
Correct, so that, oh, sorry. The lounge slash seating area, that's all enclosed space. There's no door that leads to the outside there.
Okay, and what would the process be if a door were to be added? How would the applicant proceed?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay, I was just wondering.
They would have to, doing it again.
Very hard with Zoom and in-person. How would the applicant proceed if they wanted to add a door? What would the restrictions be, or how would that be handled?
Yeah, so if they would like to have a door, they would have to apply for an amendment to the conditional use permit. So, you know, we would review and see if we considered a minor or major amendment. If it's a major amendment, we would bring it back to the PC hearing. But essentially, you know, adding a door is kind of an expansion of space, so I can see it becoming a major amendment. But, you know, of course, we would review it once it gets submitted that way. But essentially, it would just be processed through a conditional use permit amendment.
Okay, thank you. I have a few questions about the restroom facilities. How are the number of restroom facilities calculated? Maybe we can go through that process.
All right, so for this use, you know, we have a section of our code for bars and nightclubs that calculates the minimum required bathrooms, or water closets is how it's listed in there, for this use. So they require two water closets per each gender. So that means four total. The applicant is providing four unisex bathrooms. And then they also require additional urinals or other additional water closets, depending on the occupancy level. So the occupancy level has to reach a certain point to acquire additional urinals and water closets. This project does not meet that threshold. So they're just required to have four water closets for the zoning requirements.
Okay, and the number of rest, or toilets and urinals that are being provided within this building is relative to the occupancy. However, the restroom facilities are being shared with the adjacent business. Do you know how many restrooms are required in the adjacent business that is sharing the restrooms, or at least some of them? It looks like there's another restroom for the cannabis lounge that's separate.
Yes, so I reviewed this with Building and Safety, and it seems that the requirement for nightclubs that's listed in our zoning code is different from the California plumbing code. Their California plumbing code doesn't require as many water closets as the nightclub uses. They actually, I believe, only require two bathrooms or two water closets in total. So this, they, when they reviewed it, my apologies, they, when they reviewed the next-door cannabis use and the restaurant use, they reviewed it all as one, and they found that, and the lounge area in fact, and they reviewed it all as one, and they found that the required number of water closets is only two. So their requirements are actually less than what the applicant is providing. So the applicant is actually providing more than what is required for California plumbing code and meeting also the requirements of the zoning code for nightclubs and bars.
Okay, and just some follow-up questions on that. So the cannabis lounge requires two restrooms?
The, no, that's, I'm sorry. It's, it's the whole space. They did the calculations on the most stringent occupancy assembly status, and basically, they found that, though, you know, the restaurant, the lounge, and the retail space in total requires only two water closets. The applicant's providing more than what's required per California plumbing code.
Okay, so in total, two would be required in all of the area, in all of those spaces, without it being subdivided?
Correct.
And as this is being presented here, there's a requirement for four toilet facilities for the bar, and there's one additional at the lounge. So I guess I'm trying to understand how the code is being met, because there's two businesses that are operating, and I understand that the whole area was calculated under the idea that it was perhaps not a bar, but it is, and there's a minimum required for the bar, and it's being shared with an adjacent facility.
Right. So, I'm sorry.
Is there additional documentation from Building Health and Safety to understand how this is permissible? Because it feels like it's only covering half of the building, and there's another half that also is going to use the restrooms, and we haven't supplemented in this current plan?
Right. So the California plumbing code doesn't differentiate between bars, restaurants, nightclubs. They start the same, you know, plumbing fixtures requirements. So basically, when the Building and Safety reviewed this, or, you know, when it was a restaurant and as a retail space and lounge space, they deem that the whole entire space, based off all the sortage and the occupancy status and assembly, that is, that only two bathrooms are required. The requirement for the four bathroom requirements, it's actually a planning requirement that's listed in our zoning code. So there is some kind of disconnect between the two. But essentially, with the four water closets that they're providing for this bar use, they are meeting the zoning code requirements. And in terms of for the building itself, they are meeting the plumbing fixtures that's required for, for building, for the entire building.
Okay, I guess one thing that I'm a little bit caught on here is the shared use of the bathroom facilities. So the other business on the other side, if there were no door to allow access to this restroom, would require more than one toilet?
So I'll defer this to the planning manager. Jen, do you mind?
No problem. Hi. Is this working? Okay. So the provision in the zoning ordinance for restrooms for nightclubs is more about impacts on the neighborhood so that there are enough water closets that if a busy nightclub is impacted on a Saturday night, people aren't going elsewhere in the, in the neighborhood where they should not be going. So, you know, so this is less about the plumbing code necessarily. That requirement is mostly just because it was an issue at the time that the zoning code was adopted. So that's what's under our purview tonight, is the zoning coordinate, the zoning ordinance requirements. And then the plumbing code requirements, like Roger mentioned, are, you know, were revisited today by one of our plan check engineers just to make sure that everything was above board with the plumbing code, and they're satisfied with the number of water closets as far as the building code goes. I hope that helps.
Okay, thank you. I think one of my, where I'm kind of, where I'm leading with this is, what if that door were not there? What would that mean? But maybe to focus on the door there, how is that being handled in terms of security and guests moving between those two spaces? Or is that a question for the applicant?
That's probably best for the applicant, and then I know Roger can follow up if there's still questions.
Okay. And then how about ventilation? Do we know if the ventilation systems between these two properties are combined or separate?
Again, that's, that's best for the applicant.
My mic is a little better now. One, one last question. So the zone text amendments that were passed by city council, how would that impact a project like this? How would this project fall into review?
Since this is a bar, it's a major conditional use permit, and the Since this is a bar, it's a major conditional use permit, and the requirements for those have not changed, is my understanding, yes.
Okay.
So it was the minor conditional use permits for restaurant alcohol that changed, not for full alcohol at a bar or a nightclub.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lombardi. Does anyone else have any questions? For staff?
I have a couple of quick questions. Roger, just so I'm clear, did the previous tenant share restrooms with the adjacent tenant, or did they not coincide?
The previous tenant, as in like the restaurant and the retail?
Yeah.
Yes, they did.
Okay, got it. I'm also curious, and for whatever reason, is this the same applicant that owns the cannabis lounge next door, or are they two separate owners?
No, I think it's the same owner.
Oh, it is the same. So the person, so the applicant operating, who would be operating this space, also operates the cannabis facility next door?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, got it, thank you. And finally, what is the total occupancy for this space?
So Building and Safety told me that the total occupancy for this space is 41.
Forty-one people?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions, thank you. Anybody else have, have any questions at this time for staff? Roger, as I understand it, just because this is a conditional use permit hearing, the applicant will not have a presentation, correct?
Typically, they're allowed to present.
Sure.
But I don't think my applicant has one.
No, it's okay. I just wondered.
So good evening to the chair, good evening to all the commissioners. No, we don't have a presentation to make, but I'd like to answer the questions from the prior commissioner. I believe there were two questions that Roger said that the applicant could answer, so I'm happy, I'm here, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sure, so normally, what we do is we have staff present the item, which has happened, and we have commissioners ask questions of staff, so typically, the applicant would have 10 minutes to present, so you're welcome to use as much time of that as you need to answer questions asked by the other commissioners.
Okay. So, yes, so my name is Jay Handel, and both properties are co-owned. The cannabis lounge is one organization, and the bar is a separate one. That's California law, they have to be completely separate, and they have to have two separate addresses, and they have to be well-secured. So to answer the question about the hallway in the bathroom, there will be a security guard posted there the entire time that location is open, so that nobody will be able to go through from one end to the other. If you're in the bar, you're in the bar, if you're in the cannabis area, you're in the cannabis area. But there will be no, no going through with alcohol or with cannabis to either location. As far as the HVAC, yes, completely separate units for both. You know, think about the bar as being just a separate business, you know, completely. Don't think about it that we own both. Think if one rented one and one rented the other, they would have to have completely separate units and security separate and everything. So we're treating them as two separate units under California law. And, you know, myself, my background, just so you know, is I am elected in the West LA area on the neighborhood council system for 13 years, and I'm a hearing examiner for the police commission. I do not smoke or do any THC, and quite frankly, I'm a compliance person to make sure all of our stores stay fully compliant. And I stay in touch with all the local jurisdictions on a regular basis. In my past, I owned five restaurants for 27 years throughout Southern California. So I'm an experienced operator, I'm a compliant operator, and I work very well with all the cities, be it Los Angeles, Culver City, Calabasas, now West Hollywood, and happy to be in West Hollywood. I have to say, when I moved here in 1975, I moved into 450 North Kings Road. That was the first place I lived in when I moved out to California, so I'm not unfamiliar with West Hollywood. So, and I would obviously appreciate your support tonight.
Thank you. Do we have additional questions? Vice Chair Thomas, please go ahead.
Thank you. I had the exact same questions as Commissioner Lombardi. I appreciate that there'll be a security guard, but I do have a question about the division of the outdoor space and how it's divided, because on the plans, there's a, there's a darkening, it's like a gray box, and it's not labeled or dimensioned, and there's no materials listed, so, and we also don't have renderings or elevations, other than the south elevation, so it's hard to know what the materials and the design looks like for this patio. And I want to be clear, because as you stated, there are rules about separating cannabis and alcohol. So can you please explain the outdoor patio design, like what the division is? Is there, we were told there's not a door, but it kind of looks like there's a door, and it seems like there would be a door if there's a security guard, so can you, I mean, is it a window? Like, what, what is this on the plans between E and F? There's like a dark something that kind of makes it seem like it's a door? So what exactly is the division between the, the outdoor sitting area and the cannabis lounge?
So I'd ask Roger if you could put that up, so I could see exactly what the commissioner is talking about, but before he gets it up, I can tell you, the glassed-in area is part of the bar, and there is no door leading out. The only area leading outside is coming from the dispensary to the outside. And the outside is being worked on, I mean, it's basically an outdoor foliage. It's been existing for decades, okay, along with the koi pond and the bungalows that are out there. There is some work going to be done on the bungalows to make them more compliant with air conditioning, with heating. If the commissioner could show me which area you're talking about.
Where the hand just was, so this area right there, so what exactly is this? And just south of that, what are, what are these two things?
So there's no doors there. That, you know, this, there used to be a door where the hand is now, but there are no doors all along the glass wall, because that would allow people to go outside, and we cannot have that. So the, the entrance to that area is through, I wish I could give you a cursor, but if you look above the area where it says all-gender restrooms, okay, there is a doorway, you can see an opening here, right there near your hand, not there, but above, right there, that's an opening, and that's the opening that takes you outside. So, and that comes from the area with the striping, which is the cannabis area or the other, the other building. So there is no entrance from the bar, other than where here, we will have security to make sure nobody comes out of the bathroom area to go out that door. So it's fully secured, fully secured.
Okay, and I just had one other question. On the, the third page of the plans, there's an indication for areas A, B, C, D, E, and F, but then in the general notes, it's only a breakdown of A, B, C, D to the, to the right in that area. So I just wanted to find out what E and F were meant to indicate, because it's not in the ledger.
Let's see. If you could bring it back to where the commissioner was talking about, so I can see it. Thank you. So E and F, okay, is just pointing out where the bathroom areas are, is E, and F is showing that it is a solid wall going all along this area here. Because outside of the walled area is the area towards Norris, to the left. So it's just showing, yes, correct, so it's just showing this is an outdoor, this is not part of our property, this is an area that is walled off, it's the property line, and beyond it to the west is Norris.
Okay, thank you so much. Those are my only questions, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions for the applicant at this time?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Could you help explain the logic of the shared restrooms in why you're proceeding with this design?
Yes, happy to. So originally, you know, we tried to look at building a number of restrooms. Actually, there's five restrooms, not four, so let's, let me just say that if you go back to that plan, Mr. Ratt, I can show you the fifth bathroom, which is in the outside area. Okay, so this area where the hand is, that is a fifth bathroom to serve as just the outside area. And then the idea of the four bathrooms here, because of the limitation of building space and the fact that it is dual ownership of the two businesses, this is exactly how I built my restaurant in Pasadena, Mi Piace, by having shared bathrooms with the businesses that we owned in that building. This was actually something that the biggest hurdle was the health department, and because of joint ownership and the landlord being a partner in our businesses, and I think you all know who the landlord is for the property, it, it was approved for the sake of saving some space and being able to have enough operating room between the two businesses.
So this was to save space?
It was generally, does not, I mean, each area is about 1,600 square feet, and to give you an idea, you know, my, my bar in Culver City was over 5,000 square feet, and my dispensaries that I have in Venice and Lompoc and Pico and Centinella, the minimum is 2,600 square feet and goes up as high as 6,000 square feet. So opening a boutique-style dispensary and, and a boutique bar, you know, with 40, 44 people as an occupancy in a bar, as you can imagine, that's not a very big bar, and it certainly isn't a nightclub, you know, and the 1,600 square feet in the dispensary itself is at least 1,000 square feet smaller than the smallest dispensary we operate. So we're trying to be very conservative in what we do, and to make sure we don't have impacts on the neighborhood. And certainly, you know, this bar will have very little to no impact on the neighborhood at all, because of the size and the occupancy.
How are you monitoring this door between the two spaces?
Security guards, whole time, the entire time we're open, there will be onsite security. There's onsite security now.
At that door?
At, no, not yet, because the bar's not open.
Of course.
But we have onsite security currently. We have a contract with Faunet Security with all of our stores, and when the bar and the consumption area are ready to open, then we will bring on at least two more guards, one who will just be at the bathroom area, one who will be in the bar area, and of course, the one that's in the, the consumption slash dispensary area, giving us enough guards that they can rotate for a break and make sure that that area is secured the entire time we're open.
It seems like a lot of effort to have someone at that door versus, for instance, pushing that wall in toward the ADA toilet and trying to provide two restrooms for the other facility, and then maintain the four for the bar, versus having all this security, but.
So we would, just to be clear, we looked at that, and the problem is pushing the wall in to get more space. The problem is the doorway you see going out to the consumption over at the top next to, above the all-gender bathroom area, yeah, right there, that doorway that goes from the dispensary to the consumption area. If we pushed the wall to the east to try and put in another bathroom, then we wouldn't comply with ADA on the door, and we wouldn't be able to put a door to the right of it because of the way the structure is. So that would eliminate being able to have a door to go out to the outside area. And if we, it just wasn't possible. We had the architect look very, very carefully, and we came up, I think, four or five inches short of being able to do what you're talking about. And believe me, I would have preferred it.
Okay, and onto the, onto the bar, how are you managing trash, the collection of trash, and then placing the trash outside?
All, all of the trash is stored in the back in a utility area, and all the trash is brought out to the street per, you know, Athens, who we have to contract with. And, you know, it's working well now, and it will continue to work.
How, how do you bring the trash to that utility area? There's no door through the lounge or other adjacent location. Are you going out the front door and around?
So if you, yeah, if you look on the right side of the property, okay, and go all the way to the front door, okay, what you will see is that there is a hallway. I think it's on a different drawing, it's on the cannabis drawing, but you see the door to the very right at the bottom?
Yes.
There is a hallway that comes up and over, and it was dictated by fire to have that hallway, and that's the hallway that's used to bring the garbage in and out. So it doesn't go through the cannabis area, and it doesn't go through the bar, it goes through the fire hallway out to the consumption area.
So you'll take the trash out the front door and then into?
And put it on the street, you know, put the, put the cans on the street to be picked up on trash day.
Okay.
Which is what we do now.
Okay, that's my last question, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant at this time? I'm gonna take that as a no. David, do we have any public speakers on this item?
Thank you, Chair. No, we receive no public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we can move into deliberation. I'm not going first, so. Commissioner Lombardi, you up for it?
I was just going to say, I didn't want to go first either.
Okay. Vice Chair Thomas?
I'll go first, but I really don't have anything to say. I'm, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm actually, you know, happy to see this bar coming, because it, it brings life and vitality to Center City, to the positive impact on public safety, its job creation. I live on Harper, so works out for me. And I'm, you know, and, and in general, I'm in favor of the project, so just wanted to break the ice so that people, other people feel comfortable going.
Very much appreciate that. Commissioner Gregoire?
I support approval of staff's recommendation. My question is about security and protecting the residential neighborhood. Building work for answer, and concerning applicants for answer?
Thank you. Commissioner Carvajal?
Yeah, all my questions were answered during the question and answer period, and I really don't have an issue with this project. I do like staff's recommendation of closing or stopping serving alcohol at 1:30. I think that's important if it is something that we need to call out, but outside of that, I'm, I'm in support of this project.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lombardi?
Thank you. I'm generally in support of, of this project. I actually have a question for some of the more senior commissioners here. Because the decisions that we're reviewing on this property are part of the land use, so they go beyond the use of this property in perpetuity, I guess I'm wondering, there's no dance floor, is that, how is this handled in the past? Is that something that's reviewed, or the fact that in the future, it could morph into a different type of a Is that something that's reviewed or the fact that in the future it could morph into a different type of establishment? Is there anything we need to be considering there? I guess that's just a question. I don't really have any particular concerns other than what's consistent with what we've done in the past for properties like this. And then I know that there was a note about potential for this property to be a local resource. So that's something to consider as well. And in terms of signage, maybe that's more of a comment for staff as this moves forward.
Great, thank you. Roger, can, well, I guess I'd have to reopen the, reopen the, the other part of the public hearing to ask this. But Roger, can you just confirm how many parking credits we got for this? And that we did get them?
Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. And see you.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
So yeah, the, the report actually says that they're located in the parking District 2 zone. It's not that they have parking credits. They were actually required to get additional parking because of our code section that allows for, you know, if you, the change of use, if they meet decent conditions, they don't need to provide additional parking. And that's kind of what happened too for the previous use, to the restaurant use. So there's, there's no parking credits.
So there's no parking credits and there's, there's just, is it just you park where you can find parking and go? Is that?
Yeah, so parking credit doesn't really guarantee like, you know, parking space. But, you know, like, they are, people, patrons, you know, are able to use the public parking that's in that area. It's just that, you know, with the code change for the change of use, it just doesn't require us to ask for additional parking.
Okay, great, thank you. Also, I'm in error here, but I just want to know. I should have asked this before. This is my bad, sorry. First, public meeting IRL in two and a half years. I'm blaming it on that. Does anybody have any disclosures? No? No. Okay, good. So confirming nobody has any disclosures. I should have asked that earlier in the meeting. That's my bad. I don't have any additional questions. Does anyone have any additional deliberation or comments that they'd like to make? Or do we want to, does someone have a motion they'd like to put forward?
I've just made a motion.
Oh, thank you for telling me. I'll second. Just to make sure we're comfortable with this, Commissioner Lombardi, to your point earlier, are you comfortable with, can this state of the discussion?
I'm comfortable. I, I was wondering if we've ever put any restrictions in place in the past with regards to there being a dance floor or not or anything like that. I feel like someone would have spoken up if, if so.
That I recall. I mean, when Stash came through, they requested a dance floor.
Right.
So that was very clear.
Right.
If they, they need to come back to planning if they ask, they ask for a dance floor. It's not something that they can just
Do.
implement. And that changes the counts and all those things need to be readdressed at that point.
Yes, it would be an amendment to their, to their CUP. There, in the past, there was a difference in the parking ratio for a dance floor versus the rest of the bar. I'm trying to get information on whether that still exists because when the parking codes changed, I don't know them by heart anymore. But, you know, those types of uses are, are different and would require a different request. So it would be an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the clarification.
And to alleviate maybe some of your questions around that, Stash is a dance bar and have food and they have the exact same amount of fixtures as this, this business is providing. So in regards to the bathroom counts, I think they're totally final, so.
That's good to hear.
Great. And again, I just want to state for the record that all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. And it sounds like the rest of the commissioners are as well. So I am inclined to support this project. We do have a motion on the floor in a second. So David, can you go ahead and call the vote?
I'm sorry. It says that it was seconded by Chair Jones.
Oh, that, yeah, it was actually seconded by Commissioner Carvajaro, was it not? Oh, he made the motion.
I seconded.
Commissioner Thomas seconded. That's, thank you. David, for the record, has that been recorded? I just want to make sure that you got that.
It's, it's noted, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Vice Chair Thomas, if you could. Thank you. And the motion passes unanimously. There is an appeal process. The resolution of Planning Commission just approved memorializes commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The city clerk's office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees.
Great, thank you. Moving right along, new business, item 13, there is none. Item 14 is unfinished business, there is none. Item 15 is the excluded consent calendar, there is none. Item 16 is items from staff. 16A is our planning manager's update.
Good evening. We have a few, we have a few things to discuss. So it's good to be back in the council chambers. It's good to see all of you in person. But given the client that we're in right now and the hybrid approach, we wanted to just put it out there to the commission whether we wanted to, whether the commission wants to continue having in-person and/or hybrid meetings or go back to a virtual meeting environment. So that's something that we can do by consensus of the commission if we, if you so choose.
Great, thank you. Thank you for surfacing that. So just to be clear, it's my understanding that there is a pending indoor mask mandate that is supposed to happen starting next Friday unless our numbers change in terms of incidence rates. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So I would defer to the rest of the commission and would like us to discuss this. But are we able to change this at any time if we want to come back to in-person? I mean, this wouldn't mean that planning commissions happen virtually in perpetuity.
Correct. We could revisit this when necessary. I would want to make sure that we're not going back and forth too much because that's confusing to the public.
Sure.
But definitely we can revisit.
Great. Commissioner Gregoire?
You know, I, I personally feel comfortable being in-person. However, I'm, if, if the county reinstates the mask mandate, I don't really think we should be encouraging the public to be coming to our in-person meetings at this point. So if, if, if there is a new indoor mask mandate, I would support going back to virtual until the indoor mask mandate is repealed. I think it's probably good for us to encourage people to stay home with the heightened level of COVID circulating in the community. And I think we've shown that Zoom is a pretty effective way of conducting our meetings and members of the community can participate, you know, from the comfort of their homes and don't have to risk the higher level of COVID circulating in the community.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Carvajaro?
I agree. I agree with Commissioner Gregoire on this one.
So we move to, that we remain in-person?
No, to
Go virtual?
Yeah, virtual until the mask mandate changes.
Okay.
I'm fairly neutral on this one, but I understand the sentiment of what all the commissioners are saying. And honestly, as I literally just received an exposure notification on my phone, so I'm a heavy mask wearer. But, I mean, it's a reality right now. And it might be good to encourage people to, you know, go virtual where they can. The, the question that I have is maybe around, this might be a separate topic, but where this heads next with regards to, for example, today, if a commissioner is sick and cannot attend, is there any way that we could look at a hybrid setup for someone like that? Or do we want to talk about that later? But it's my only real thought.
And staff can clarify. I believe we all have to be either in-person together or on Zoom together. There can't be a mixture because of the Brown Act.
Yeah, and the biggest concern, for example, tonight with the number of public hearings, you know, if the members of the public cannot see a commissioner throughout the entire meeting and as you can see, we have to switch between Zoom and Granicus, which is the system we use to run the meeting, we could have a legal issue. So that's the biggest concern. What I will share with the commission and members of the public is that we have, we have a plan and have ordered the supplies to make the room fully Zoom-integrated. But as many of you know, there are supply chain issues and we ordered this stuff September of last year and are still waiting. So the, we don't really call these hybrid meetings. We simply are using Zoom as a way for people to call into the meeting. And we can do this under AB 361, but as many of you know, the Brown Act is pretty strict on teleconference capabilities normally. So I think we just, Lauren Langer, the city attorney, and I continue to look at legislation and what's happening at that level. And there may come a time when there's an integration between in-person and virtual for appointed and elected officials. But currently, the goal is for appointed officials to be in-person and the calling feature to be available for members of the public.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
I may be blurring my presentations between various planning commissions, but I thought it was the city of Ojai recently that had a hybrid setup that I presented to. So I'm curious how, how they pulled that off or maybe they have this setup that you're speaking about already established and, and that's how they move forward. But yeah, I, I think that my concern is, is only around, you know, people being able to participate, especially if people are continuing to get COVID, but maybe feel well enough that they could get on Zoom. Otherwise, heading toward virtual temporarily makes sense to me. It's great to be here in person, though.
Commissioner Thomas, or Vice Chair Thomas, I'm never gonna learn. Sorry.
You're fine. I agree. I, I think we need to, you know, have everyone prioritize their health and we should consider virtual for, for just a little while at least.
Yeah, I'm aligned with what everyone has said. I think just to comply, well, one, I don't know that any of us want to come potentially be exposed and have to wear a mask for the entirety of a meeting. I think that's a little onerous for everybody here. I also just, you know, maybe stating the obvious, but you know, this is a community that has, you know, lived through another epidemic and I just want to be sensitive to anybody's health status if they're immunocompromised for whatever reason. I mean, I don't presume to know what, kind of what everyone is going through. So I would just think it would be safer to, or on the, err in the side of caution and go virtual until it's safer, maybe there are boosters available for Omicron, whatever it might be. But I think we can discuss that at the right time. It just seems, it's, California's kind of been a, just a super-spreader event as a state. So I think it's probably wise for us to go virtual until things have, the dust has settled a little bit.
Okay, that sounds good. So then that takes us to our subcommittees. We would like to know, same question for Design Review Subcommittee, the Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee and the Long Range Planning Subcommittee. Do we want to hold those also virtually?
I mean, in regards to Design Review, we had an in-person Design Review meeting last week and I have to say, it felt so antiquated. You know, when, when you're on Zoom, everybody's looking at the same thing. Everybody's focused in the same direction. And it was interesting to watch the applicant come in with all these big posters that you know are just going to end up in the garbage. And it just seemed like, you know, from a carbon footprint point of view and from an accessibility, from the public point of view, Design Review, I feel, actually works better on Zoom than it does in-person. And there's less waste and the conversation seems to be more dynamic in that, in that sort of Zoom world. So for me, I mean, I too like in-person. But for Design Review and the types of discussions that we've had over the last couple of years, I think have excelled the conversations that we had before the pandemic, which is interesting because it's something that we're also experiencing at UCLA with teaching. You know, a lot of the design studios are actually more successful online than they have been in-person. And we all thought it was impossible before. And the transition has kind of taught us all something very new and different. So that's kind of my, my point of view with the Design Review.
Any further comments about Design Review, Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee or Long Range Planning Meetings?
I agree 100% with all of those comments. I think the only thing that's a little bit tricky is material samples, which is something that we used to do. But all of the other benefits do seem really great. It didn't feel quite antiquated. And we weren't able to have a hybrid sort of setup either. So it really didn't give people two, two options in that regard. And so the default option was the more challenging one in terms of showing up in my mind, although I guess there's a technology challenge as well that should be acknowledged. But it, it felt like, yeah, it, it felt a little bit archaic. I agree.
Any other comments? Yeah, I, oh, please go ahead. Yeah, this is just for subcommittees. I mean, I was just gonna say, I'm, you know, if we're back in-person and we're, you know, long range has always been just before the meeting. I mean, I'm fine with keeping it in-person. We could also do it virtually, but it does just nest nicely, kind of, we're here for both meetings. I think that can stay as is. I would also say that for Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee, I would be fine with having that be virtual. I agree with Commissioner Carvajaro in that, with the exception of, you know, material samples and things like that, it is, it just seems easier for everyone to be there. I would also say virtual meetings make it a lot easier for people to participate from further away. Maybe they're out of town, you know. I don't, I don't know how much that applies, but I think it would help people miss less meetings in a time when, you know, people are actually starting to travel again. So I'd be aligned with keeping those meetings virtual.
I have one, one last comment.
Oh, please go.
Yeah, I mean, in regards to Design Review, because I was getting it some thought, you know, for large pivotal projects like Robertson Lane or Melrose Triangle or the Arts Club, you know, maybe we consider those in-person as sort of stand-alones because we do have materials, they do have models. And it's sometimes with something like that, maybe it's good to consider when those special projects come up. That's the only thing that would be sort of a standalone for me.
And that people could still tune in, yeah, via Zoom and via phone.
Right, it'd be, right, it'd be a hybrid.
Okay, so let me just restate what I've heard to make sure I have it correctly. Okay, so we will be holding Planning Commission meetings virtually until there is some sort of change such as the lifting of the indoor mask mandate that we feel like is coming soon.
Yeah, I think that's, or incidence rates go down, but I would presume that would, you know, go along with the ending of a mask mandate.
Okay. For Design Review Subcommittee, we will hold those virtually unless it's a large, complex project and we'll just use judgment on that and, and notice the meetings accordingly. For the Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee, those will be moved to virtual until further notice. And then for Long Range Planning, we will hold those virtual when Planning Commission is virtual and then hold those in-person when Planning Commission is in-person. Does that track?
I think that sounds right.
One suggestion I would make that we can all think about for projects where a materials palette is provided or is important to the review, we can have those things available at City Hall and the public and, and commissioners can come in. And now that City Hall is open, we can have the, you know, that type of thing available too.
I like that suggestion.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I like that suggestion.
Agreed.
Okay. The next item I had is, we want to schedule a special meeting for August 4th for the Long Range Planning Subcommittee. That Planning Commission meeting was canceled. So, and it's not the typical Planning Commission date that would have a Long Range Planning Subcommittee meeting. But we would like to keep the West Hollywood West Neighborhood Overlay District update moving. And so we'd like to use that date if possible. So is there a conflict with that?
Just to be clear, was the August, so the August 4th meeting was canceled?
Yes.
Man, I missed a lot of the last meeting. Okay. Oh, okay, okay. So the August 4th meeting is canceled, but you're requesting that the Long Range Planning meeting still be held?
Right, it would be a special meeting because it's not the typical date for the Long Range Planning Subcommittee.
Got it. Does this supersede the one that's currently planned for August 18?
No.
No, okay. Would it be at 5:30 normal time, just virtually?
Yes, I mean, we could, we could propose an alternate time since Planning Commission isn't happening, but we were proposing it at 5:30.
So I was going to state this.
So I was going to state this during my commissioner comments. On August 4th, I, I'm the Executive Director of the Los Angeles LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce, and I'll be representing the chamber at the National LGBT Chamber Conference on the 4th, and it's not local. So I, I thought I was going to be announcing that I would be missing the Planning Commission meeting, but there's no Planning Commission meeting. So I don't have the agenda for the conference yet, so I don't know if I'm available at 5:30, but can I report to you by tomorrow, once I, see if I can get the conference schedule?
I think that's fine. I think we can plan on having it, and then if we have to make, change plans, we can change plans.
Well, Chair Jones would be the only person there.
Right, I mean, it would be a one-person meeting, which really wouldn't be a meeting.
I guess, I, let me back up. We would just say, the answer is yes, we'll have it unless we hear otherwise from you. And if we hear otherwise from you, Vice Chair Thomas, then we can move it to a different date or change, or put it on another agenda.
Okay. I think I know the answer to this question. I'm going to ask the city attorney. So we are a commission of five people right now, will be six at our next meeting, presuming Kimberly is able to be with us, which I hope she can. Is there a scenario where we could have someone sub in, or is that just not? I'm assuming because of the size, because we are down a person on the Subcommittee, because we are down two commissioners right now, right? So I'm assuming that there'd be a potential quorum situation, but I'm just curious. Not that I wouldn't love to have you, but.
Yeah, I believe, I know Lauren, the city attorney, has been looking at that possibility, and so I don't have a definitive answer there, only to say I think that there were some city policies to look at for the feasibility of doing something like that. So apologies, I don't have a
That's okay.
definitive answer.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, just let us know.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that tentatively. Vice Chair Thomas, let us know when you can, and then we'll finalize once we know more. And then finally, we would like to schedule Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee meeting for September 8th. We have not yet set out an agenda for the Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee. We were planning to do that once we have Subcommittee appointments, which has been delayed a little bit. So we would just like to schedule a special meeting of that Subcommittee to review a project that's been patiently waiting to get on an agenda. So would that be amenable to the members of the Subcommittee for September 8th?
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have, I don't have any conflicts at that date.
Okay, great.
Let me make sure, let me check both my calendars, one second. Sorry, I think it's fine. Microsoft needs to make its products a little more user-friendly. Yeah, that's totally fine.
Great. And then lastly, what I, what I normally do is go through the upcoming agendas. So the next meeting will be August 18th. The August 4th meeting will be canceled. It looks like it will be held virtually. We have a heavy agenda that night, so just keep that in mind. We've got a 24-unit multifamily residential development on San Vicente Boulevard at 948 to 954. We're looking at a billboard at 8497 to 8499 Sunset Boulevard. We're looking at a general plan consistency finding for easement vacation at 8920 Sunset, which is the Arts Club. And then three zone text amendments, which one is a cleanup for ADU, accessory dwelling unit language, to bring us into compliance with state law. One is a prohibition of fossil fuel service stations, and one is for replacing some language in the code with regard to extended hours permits. It's just a cleanup. The September 1st meeting will have two subdivisions similar to what we saw tonight, one at 950 Ogden and one at 933 Spalding. And then we're hoping to also bring the West Hollywood West Design Review Standards, the update to the Neighborhood Overlay District that night if possible. So that's what's coming up for Planning Commission. Design Review Subcommittee will be held, the August 11th meeting does not have items, it's been canceled, but August 25th, we will be looking at 8850 Sunset Boulevard, the mixed-use hotel project. Then on Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee on September 8th, it's 8590 Sunset will be reviewed. And that is the next meeting of that Subcommittee as well. And then at Long Range Planning Subcommittee, if we are able to, on August 4th, we will review the West Hollywood West Design Review Standards, the update to the Neighborhood Overlay District. And on August 18th, zone text amendment for prohibition, to discuss the prohibition of development of new or expanded non-residential projects on residentially zoned parcels. So those are the upcoming items for the next few meetings. And that is, that completes what I have to say. One more question for me.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gregoire?
I just want to mention that I won't be at the August 18th meeting. We should have six commissioners by then, but in case there's any concern about a quorum, I will not be there.
Thank you for the heads up. Item 17 is public comment. David, do we have any public speakers on the line? Oh. Oh.
No joke.
That's after.
Oh, my fault.
Yeah, it's okay.
No, we have no public speakers for this public comment.
Great, thank you. Item 18 is items from commissioners, please go ahead.
My apologies, Chair. I just wanted to first say to soon-to-be Commissioner Copeland, if you're watching, I hope you feel better, and I wanted to encourage everyone to come to the 39th anniversary of National Night Outs on August 2nd. It is a time when West Hollywood residents gather in the streets to show, it's a show of unity against crime, and it is on the West Hollywood website. So I hope people come out for that.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
I just wanted to call any alarms. My exposure alert was actually from the 11th, and I remember it was my neighbor, so I don't know why it's sending it to me again, but so y'all know, I tested negative.
Thank you. Thank you for telling us now at the end of the meeting. Any other comments?
I just have one note, and I just, because it looks like, you know, I'm, I am chair, at least through the general election. So I'm getting married this year. I don't, wouldn't normally publicly surface this, but it does mean that there is going to be a date that I am not going to be here. It's not for my wedding, but it's for an associated event, and that is on October 6th. So I just wanted to flag that, and I'll continue to make reminders. But yeah, so that's it. And unless anybody has anything else, any notes about Subcommittee management, which I believe everyone has already, we've kind of gone through that, we can move into adjournment. We will not be meeting Thursday, August 4th, as is published on the agenda for this meeting. We will be meeting August 18th virtually at 6:30 PM, and look forward to seeing and hearing everyone there. Thank you.